Good evening, everyone. Welcome to today's regularly scheduled council meeting for Monday, June 25th, the year 2018. Let us rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Present.
Franciski?
Present.
Walker?
Present.
Vasquez?
Present.
Garcia?
Present.
Orange?
Present.
Perez?
Present.
Monroe? Medina?
Present.
Councilman Monroe advised that he had some personal business to attend to and will not be here today. Clerk Santos, first item on the agenda.
Mr. President, we have a public hearing on Ordinance 18-0008, sponsor Mayor Anthony Copeland, and ordinance vacating a portion of the public alley pursuant to Indiana Code
Do we have anyone here to speak in reference to this public hearing? We will skip this item for today. Next item for public hearing?
Ordinance 18-0010, sponsor Mayor Anthony Copeland, additional appropriation ordinance, motor vehicle highway fund, street reconditioning, restructuring.
Is there anyone here to speak on this item today?
Hello, William Allen City Engineer. So this is basically requesting an additional $2.5 million for the reconstruction of Guthrie. This is the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, or NVH. Right now, currently, there is a $400,000 in reconstruction, so we want to add to this in order for us to fulfill the project.
Do we have any questions? Councilman Garcia?
Can you also, since it is a public hearing, can you also speak on what's going to be done on Guthrie?
So Guthrie, from Klein all the way to Michigan Avenue will be reconstructed. All the underground utilities will be replaced. This is your water main, your sewers, for the entire stretch. Concrete will also be replaced. Additional lighting and landscaping will also be incorporated in this job.
Councilman Garcia?
Yes. You mentioned that, how much is in that vehicle highway fund right now?
I believe there is $404,000 in the reconstruction line item, or section of the NVH.
Did you mention something about $2 million or something?
Two, 2.5, I'm requesting to add to the reconstruction, to help fund the Guthrie reconstruction project.
Are you asking for 2 million?
Yeah, 2.5 to be added.
To be added. And that's coming from where?
That is additional money, I guess in reserves, to be added to that funding source.
Continue.
Mr. Don, where would that, the 2.5 million come from?
They're requesting from the NVH fund, which the mayor reserves, I think it's called 201.
201.
Is there a reserve?
The 2.5?
There's probably more than that.
Alright, thank you.
Any further questions? Councilwoman Vasquez.
Yes, so William, is that an estimate as to how much the whole project's going to cost? Is that why you're asking for that particular amount?
No, this will, the whole project, what we're going to be getting from the RDA is $8 million. The only caveat is that we're getting in increments versus how we received it in the past. We got the lump sum altogether for the project, but since we'll be getting it in increments, you know, over the years, this is going to help push the project forward instead of pushing it back.
So we'll get there, but we're suspending.
Correct, yes, yes.
Councilman Garcia?
Yes, you just mentioned RDS, RDS giving us $8 million. That Guthrie's own cost, that much?
Yeah.
It's own cost, $8 million.
Yeah, it's a major project.
Any further questions?
I'm sorry, also, golf, it will be the contractor conducting the work. They are prepared, you know, to mobilize and begin work, which at this point wouldn't start until around three, maybe four weeks from now. I'm also requesting if we can suspend the rulings when we get to the adoption later on in the meeting, so that we can begin to proceed.
Councilman Garcia?
Yes, can we just make sure they follow the hiring ordinance?
Mm-hmm. Oh, okay. And I wish Allegra was here, he can probably speak.
He's right behind you.
Oh, he wishes your command, I'm trying to knock in here.
You want to speak on that, or?
We will follow, we are going to follow the ordinance.
Okay.
The short answer is long enough.
Yes, just, I'm just, I'm always leery when department heads come up here and ask us to suspend the rules, and that should never happen. That should never happen. We have an executive branch, and they should be, they should be contacting us to get that done, or he's got, he's got a chief of staff to get that done. And for us to suspend the rules, that's a lot of money. That's a lot of money. So, that's all I just want to say.
Any further questions on this issue? Thank you.
Thank you.
The podium is now open to the public to express whether they are in favor or against this additional appropriation of 2.5 million dollars. With none said, the podium is closed to this item, but we'll revert back to Ordinance 18-0008, an ordinance vacating a portion of the public alley pursuant to Indiana Code. Mr. Allegra, could you speak on this, please?
I apologize, Counsel. Caught by the, caught by a train. The statutory process involving vacating a public right-of-way, in this case, a public alley, requires the advertisement for a public hearing, which has occurred, has been advertised one time as required by Title V, at least 10 days prior to today's hearing, and it's, I think the last time I was here, I had failed to send a sketch of the alley, and I think I sent it to everyone by email. I have additional copies, if anyone is interested in it. This is, the public hearing is just to observe the requirements of the statute and our ordinance.
Thank you. Councilman Garcia?
Can I get one? Thank you.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Allegra?
Can you leave that here? I'll pass them on later.
Thank you, sir. The podium is now open to the public to express whether they are in favor or against vacating a portion of a public alley pursuant to Indiana Code. With none approaching, the public hearing portion of today's meeting is closed. We will revert back to the regular meeting. First item, Council, Clerk Santos.
Minutes of the council meeting, regular meeting, Monday, May 14, 2018.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Garcia, properly second by Councilwoman Walker, to hear regular meeting minutes, Monday, May 14. Any questions? Roco?
Maldonado? Yes.
Franciski?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item?
Minutes for the regular meeting, Tuesday, May 29, 2018.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Garcia, properly second by Councilwoman Vasquez, to hear regular meeting minutes for Tuesday, May 29. Any questions? Roco?
Maldonado?
Yes.
Franciski?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item?
Minutes, minutes for the regular meeting, Monday, June 11, 2018.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Garcia, properly second by Councilwoman Orange, to hear minutes, regular meeting, Monday, June 11. Questions on that motion? Roco?
Maldonado?
Yes.
Franciski?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Epstein.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Motion carries. Clerk Santos, next item?
Communications from the mayor's office. We have the Director of Public Works, Director Keith Selby, with a update.
Good evening, Keith Selby, Director of Public Works. I was asked to come today to give you guys a quick update on the status of our community centers. I believe I saw a couple folks in present, that were present for our ribbon cutting on last week for Site One, which is Heritage Hall. It turned out to be a very nice building. And the second building, Site Two, will be opening approximately around July 30 of this year. I hope to see everyone there for that ribbon cutting as well. What I'm, what I want to speak about tonight is the final rendering for Site Three has come. Typically, Marino Solario, the Director of Public, excuse me, Economic Development, will be here to talk to you guys about this, but he is on vacation, so I'm stepping in in his absence. What you have before you is a rendering of what we would like, or what we expect Block Stadium to look like, and that would also include the third and final center. Third and final center basically will be an educational center and exhibit hall. We're going to pay homage to the East Chicago Hall of Fame at that particular building, as well as there's some auditorium space and so forth. It approximately costs about 2.5 million dollars. As you guys probably remember, Site One and Site Two were right around about 4 million, and this is going to be the third and final one for 2.5.
Councilman Garcia?
And that shrine or auditorium there, that's going to be there at Block Stadium?
That's correct. On the parish side?
The parish side.
Yep, the parish side that's currently there. The Hall of Fame will be housed within the concession stand. If you can see on Page One, you'll see part of the actual building is actually dedicated for the concessions, the other half will be part for the exhibits, and then there's an auditorium there to, I guess it would be to south part of the building that we can use for educational training and things of that nature for the actual center.
Section, right?
That's correct.
Any further questions? Sir, what's the capacity of that auditorium?
That's a good question. I am not sure. I know that the auditorium is going to be probably, I would say, over half of the building. I know the circle part is basically the concessions, and then there will be a part where we can walk in and look at the different memorabilia from different East Chicagoans, but Marino Solario will probably have a much better understanding as well as capacity for that particular, to answer that question, I guess I should say. I would like to say, if you guys have not been by Block Stadium, it's coming along very well. As I had mentioned before, Marino kind of handles these things. I actually work with the actual contractors on a day-to-day basis, just making sure they're up to code, making sure that they're on schedule and so forth, so we're pretty close to buttoning it up on top. We've done the roof, we got the seating guys coming back to finish their final portion, and it's turning to be, turned out to be a very nice project. I think you guys, once we're finished, are going to be proud of it.
Councilwoman Vasquez?
Did you mention a completion date for Block Stadium?
I did not. Estimated right now is somewhere in 2019. Marino Solario will have a better date for you. I know that the actual educational center exhibit will be estimated to be completed for sure, 2019, in terms of the actual date. I do not have that.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you for the update, sir.
Thank you.
Clerk Santos, next item?
Communication from department heads, accounts payable warrant 061218CC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Orange, properly second by Councilwoman Walker, to hear accounts payable warrant 061218CC. Questions on that motion? Roco?
Maldonado?
Yes.
Franciski?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
No.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes, the motion carries.
Next item?
Accounts payable warrant 062518CC.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Franciski, properly second by Councilwoman Vasquez, to hear accounts payable warrant 62, correction, 062518CC. Questions on that motion? Roco?
Maldonado?
Yes.
Franciski?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
No.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item?
Accounts payable warrant 062518LA.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Walker, properly second by Councilman Franciski, to hear accounts payable warrant 062518LA. Roco?
Maldonado?
Yes.
Franciski?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
No.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Next item?
Accounts payable warrant 062818CC.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Vasquez, properly second by Councilman Franciski, to hear accounts payable warrant 062818CC. Any questions?
Maldonado?
Yes.
Franciski?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
No.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes, motion carries.
Next item?
Accounts payable warrant 062918CC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Orange, properly second by Councilwoman Walker, to hear accounts payable warrant 062918CC. Any questions? Roco?
Maldonado?
Yes.
Franciski?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
No.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item?
Payroll warrant, biweekly, 061518.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Garcia, properly second by Councilwoman Vasquez, to hear payroll warrant, biweekly, 061518. Any questions? Roco?
Maldonado?
Yes.
Franciski?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item?
Payroll warrant miscellaneous, 062218.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second, Mr. President.
Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Vasquez, properly second by Councilman Garcia, to hear payroll warrant miscellaneous, 062218. Questions on that motion? Roco?
Maldonado?
Yes.
Franciski?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Motion carries. Clerk Santos, did you receive anything from the fire chief in reference to payable warrants? Okay, next item?
BZA petition for use variance to allow medical billing and storage facility at 3847 Euclid.
Do we have anyone here to speak on that today?
Joe Allegra, Corporation Council. This is a use variance, what I always call a two-step variance. The public hearing and the opportunity for residents to speak occurred before the Board of Zoning Appeals, and they made a recommendation, as the council in full knows well, granting or denying, this application for use variance is entirely within the discretion of the common council, with the caveat that if the council fails to act within 90 days, it is deemed approved. The property is zoned R1, seeking a use variance for the purpose of opening a medical billing and record storage facility, a use that normally would only be permitted in a C1 district. The property is located in Councilman Garcia's district, which is why he, our protocol, we name, the law department names him as the sponsor, not to assume that he is in favor or against it. The BZA made some recommendations for some conditions to grant him, which of course, those recommendations are not binding upon the council. There are only four of them, that the business license be required, the tech review be required, limiting the hours of business to 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM Monday through Friday, and that the use variance would not be transferable if the property would be sold or leased or to be used for another purpose.
Councilman Garcia?
And the representative of the owners also here could answer questions in case anybody wishes to ask him.
Mr. President, I just want to tell my colleagues, I did have Marino and Mr. Marshrow contact me, and we discussed this, and I know, everybody knows that location has been vacant for years, and we're hoping that this, for somebody to get in there, we finally got somebody to take that building over, but it's good to see somebody come in and use this building instead of getting it knocked down, so I support, the rest of the council supports this.
And that gentleman is Milton Robinson, he's also here for the ultimate operator, an ikeben, Dr. Paul Okolocha, MD.
Now move into committee reports? No committee reports? Move into board reports? We have any board reports? Councilman Garcia?
Mr. President, as finance chair, I asked Mr. Don to try to get our up-to-date budget where we at. He just handed me today, when did they give them to you, Mr. Don?
Friday.
Friday. Trying to see if we could get a copy for the rest of the council, so they can know where we at on this budget.
Do you want me to just email somebody?
Yes, sir. But it's just a half-a-year assessment of where we at, where are all these budgets. I got some questions, but I'll hold that for new business.
Any further board reports? Move on to the next item, Clerk Santos?
Ordinance on first reading, Ordinance 18-0009, sponsor Mayor Anthony Copeland, an ordinance of the, an ordinance of the common council of the city of East Chicago authorizing the transfer of appropriations into different budget categories of the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, 0201, for partial funding of Guthrie Street Project.
So moved on first and second reading.
Second, Mr. President.
Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Orange, properly second by Councilman Garcia, to hear Ordinance 18-0009 on first and second reading. Questions on the motion, Councilman Garcia?
Yes, Will came up here and spoke on it. ICD, we got one, two, three ordinance, and is this roughly on the same project?
Yeah, this is the same project. This is just also basically rearranging the funds from this source to be transferred over into the reconstruction.
Mr. Don?
Sir?
I just don't know why we need three ordinances on this matter here, so if you could, please explain to us.
So, this first ordinance is a transfer of existing appropriation. You already gave them some budget authority, and they're taking from personnel expense and putting in industry reconstruction, about a million dollars. The second ordinance you're going to look at is an additional appropriation, so they want to spend two and a half million dollars more than was budgeted originally, again for the same project. So the grand total is about three and a half million dollars, that's being put into the Guthrie Street Project.
Correct.
So they're just grabbing it from two sources.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Vasquez?
I just don't want to be confused here, William. So ordinances nine and 10 are for the Guthrie Street Project?
Correct.
Not 11?
11, no. Separate, different.
Okay, thank you.
And then I can speak on 11 or later, right?
Later.
Later, okay.
Any further questions? Thank you. Roco?
Maldonado?
Yes.
Franciski?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes, that motion carries.
Next item?
Ordinance 18-00110, sponsor Mayor-
So moved. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Keep going?
I was going to jump to that.
Sponsor Mayor Anthony Copeland, an additional appropriation ordinance, motor vehicle highway fund, street reconditioning, restructuring.
So moved on first and second reading.
Second, Mr. President.
Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Orange, properly second by Councilman Garcia, to hear Ordinance 18-0010, on first and second reading. Any questions? Councilman Franciski?
I mean, no questions, it's more of a comment, and I'm all for new construction in East Chicago, but I'll go back to saying that, Will, I mean, let's put some dollars over here on the East Chicago side. It seems like everything we're doing here, it's all for the harbor. Nothing, nothing against the harbor, and I know we're still waiting for that project that you'd come back with us on the boulevard, but that's, that's my comment.
Councilman Garcia?
Yes, and I forgot to bring it up at that last, I mean, them kick-out curves that you guys are doing out- on Columbus Drive, I see there might be some issues, and when you got buses turning those corners, because, you know, if a bus, either a school bus or a city transit bus, they gotta wait to to that traffic clears before they could even make a right-hand turn. So I don't know if that was taken into effect of these corners, because them corners are going to be very narrow, you know, and these buses can't make those turns.
Yeah, so the bump outs for Columbus Drive, those were designed to accommodate the turning radiuses of large vehicles, such as, you know, your buses for your public transportation as well as school. We also had some public meetings, Chief Serna, Frank Rizzuto, also had, you know, their reservations, but we came together, we discussed it, and we kind of put those to rest.
One thing I noticed, and I noticed this because one of my buses got into an accident, they made a right-hand turn, and the cars on both sides were so parked more toward the corner, but the yellow on the curve was painted, but it was following the law, but the yellow non-parking needs to be extended more so traffic can make that right, and there's no cars on your right-hand side, there's no car on your left-hand side.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
That's one thing I've been noticing with some of these corners, that in the neighborhood, that some of these buses just can't turn, because they got cars on both ends all the way to the corner, so.
And I'll be sure to work with Public Works to get that straight.
Is that going to be an issue on Guthrie? Guthrie Street?
No.
No, none at all?
No.
Okay, cool, that's what this ordinance is all about, so let's stay on this additional appropriation for now. Any further questions on this additional appropriation? Clerk Santos, roll call.
Maldonado?
Yes.
Franciskey?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes, motion carries. Next item.
Ordinance 18-0011, sponsor Mayor Anthony Copeland, an ordinance of the common council of the City of East Chicago authorizing the transfer of appropriations into different budget categories for the General Fund 0101, Engineering Department, to fund the street resurfacing project.
So moved on first and second reading, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Garcia, properly second by Councilwoman Vasquez, to hear on first and second reading, ordinance 18-0011. Questions on that motion? Councilman Garcia?
Okay, so this is from the Engineering General Fund. Previously, I came before to request $10 million be put in General Fund, it's there, just all of it has been put into reconstruction, I just need to shift some of those reconstruction dollars into resurfacing, so that I can get the package, so I can carry out the package. And so this is requesting that four million out of the 10 be moved to resurfacing, leaving just six in reconstruction.
Any questions? Councilwoman Orange?
Maybe you can give us a list of all the streets that have been done, and that will be done, so that the council people here can get a breakdown of what has been done? Because my councilman to the left of me, I've rode through those streets in your district, and you've had quite a bit of work done in that district, Councilman Franciskey, so. Don't get to the mic first, because I mean, I couldn't ride down a street that didn't have anything done, so I was just wondering, maybe you can give us a breakdown of streets that have been done, so we can see what's going on.
Okay, I can-
More than two streets though, Council.
I can start from 2015 until current, and then I can even carry over into 19 as well?
Yeah, you might as well throw in the alleys too.
Okay, will do.
Any further questions? Roll call.
Maldonado?
Yes.
Franciskey?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes, that motion carries. Next item.
Ordinance on second reading, ordinance 18-0008, Mayor sponsor, or sponsor Mayor Anthony Copeland, an ordinance vacating a portion of the public alley pursuant to Indiana Code 36-7-3-12/16.
So moved on second and third reading, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Garcia, properly second by Councilwoman Orange, to hear on second and final reading, ordinance 18-0008. Any questions on that motion? Clerk Santos, roll call to adopt.
Maldonado?
Yes.
Franciskey?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange? Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes, the motion carries. Next item.
There are no ordinances on third reading, Mr. President? Resolutions, Resolution 18-0008, sponsor Councilman Robert Garcia, a resolution of the common council of the City of East Chicago concerning a petition for a use variance to allow medical billing and storage facility at 3847 Euclid Avenue.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Garcia, properly second by Councilwoman Vasquez, to hear Resolution Number 18-0008. Any questions? Councilwoman Orange?
They said the owner of the building was here, so if he could step forward and introduce himself?
Good evening, can you give us your name?
My name is Melvin Robinson, I am, I would just say I'm the maintenance supervisor for the building.
You said you were the maintenance?
Maintenance supervisor, we have four other office buildings, so I kind of like run all the maintenance, making sure it's clean, making sure the fires and things are there, making sure, any questions to the zoning, any questions that have to be answered towards the building.
So you want to be actually doing the operation as far as the billings and medical billings or anything like that?
No, I won't be, only thing I will be doing, maybe setting up the computers and putting the chairs in, you know, but it'll be, I already got information from them, what was detailed to what they were doing as far as the billing goes. So shoot your best shot, I mean, how many like that?
Councilman Garcia?
Yes, I just want to thank, if you could thank the doctor for coming in and making use of that building. Like I said, it's been vacant for a year, because now we have another building on the tax rolls that we have come to the city, but I'd like to thank you on my behalf.
Any further questions? Thank you, sir. Clerk Santos, roll call to adopt Resolution 18-0008.
Maldonado?
Yes.
Franciskey?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
I'm only doing this for Councilman Garcia, yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. That motion carries. Resolution adopted. Floor is now open to all business. Councilman Garcia?
Yeah, Mr. President, I understand this past Friday, I think they swore in 14 or 15 new firemen. I know I didn't get an invitation, I don't know, I didn't see no other council pictures there, but I think it's sad that, you know, we've been at the forefront of trying to get public safety squared away, and we do not get invited to a swearing-in ceremony, that we have 14 or 15 get swearing in, and I think somebody dropped the ball on that, Mr. President, so I advise that we should be invited to these swearing-in ceremonies, we do control that budget for those departments, and we should be invited to those swearing-in ceremonies. Also, Mr. President, Steve? Can you give us the update on, we supposed to be meeting next month?
We are, and now the date escapes me, I think it's July 12th, we asked for a meeting with the controller and the financial advisor to the mayor, and they have agreed to that, and we need to set a time, and we'll have a meeting, probably in here, because it'll be a larger meeting, and I think we should notice the meeting, just in case more than the small group of council people want to attend, we don't break open door. It's July 12th, I'll make sure everybody gets a notice, and I'll get that to Vivian as well.
Also, did you get a chance to go through that budget when you got it Friday?
I flipped through the document that I handed you, I can't tell you that I've memorized it all, but if you have a specific question, I'd be glad to look at the copy you have.
Are we in minus, negative any of these counts that I think I seen?
Well, let me take a broad brush stroke, and then I can look at specifics with you. We are in a very good position financially, cash-wise, in almost all the funds, especially the General Fund, the MVH Fund, the Gaming Fund, the current cash balance is a large balance, probably the largest I've seen in the last few years, just because we've been financially frugal. There may be specific line items that are in the negative, I would, the only caution I would give you is I looked at one very specifically, and there was some encumbrances in place that are, bills that haven't actually even been paid yet, so you might look at both real expenditures and encumbrances to see what's left for the budget year, because the Controller's Office will put an encumbrance in when they know they've got bills coming, especially if it's a large set of bills, a million dollars, two million dollars for the street reconstruction, those will get encumbered, and it'll look like we spent the money, we haven't spent it yet.
How about what they got budgeted for, you know, and where you at now?
We're doing-
We got the surplus, I'm not talking about the surplus as far as what they-
My take on the, let's just talk about the General Fund, okay, because that's probably the one that's the most prone to be asked about, my take is that we are currently still underspending the General Fund that you approved, the General Fund budget that you approved, so I think that's good, I think that's a good indicator that we're continuing to spend less than the appropriation. If you have specific line items, I don't have them memorized.
0231, cash EC redevelopment, here minus 136,000.
Is that the top number?
Yes.
So my guess would be what would happen in a fund that had a negative balance for cash would be that that fund has paid out something that they're awaiting reimbursement on, and if it's redevelopment, typically that's going to be RDA-related, where we've paid out hundreds of thousands or a million dollars on some type of construction project, and the RDA owes us a reimbursement, that typically is the case with an RDA or an EC redevelopment fund.
I see the same thing with the gasoline fund too.
Gasoline is a revolving account, so we pay out, and then we get reimbursed from the various departments, sanitary, water, Public Works, so quite often the revolving account will drop down, and then it'll submit reimbursements to the other funds and come back up again.
And the same thing with Public Works, reviving.
Public Works is a revolving, so it's probably awaiting money from sanitary, awaiting money from water, awaiting money from the General Fund's controller miscellaneous accounts. I didn't see any of the negatives that jumped out at me as, uh-oh, we're in trouble, like if the General Fund was in the negative.
How about this police pension, isn't it?
We get reimbursed by the state, and I believe that will come in June, and that report was run in, you know, last week, so we probably haven't received that pension reimbursement yet from the state. And we just got property taxes today, yesterday, so that does not reflect property taxes yet either. But I can go over any individual line items, because I know you had a question about specific budgets.
Yeah, but let me go through this first before I even-
And I'll send it to everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Councilman Garcia, continue.
Just going back to the bump outs with Will, are you going to have bump outs on Indianapolis Boulevard?
Bump outs for Indianapolis, that is still currently being designed at this point, I don't think so.
Yeah, because I don't think that'll work.
We still have a public meeting referenced in Indianapolis Boulevard, is that correct?
Yes.
Any idea when that's going to come about?
I would say one or two months.
Okay, just don't forget us.
Right, I won't.
Thank you, Councilman Garcia.
Yeah, you said one or two months, and that's, it's not going to be final? We just-
No.
You guys to come to us in one or two months and say, this is the final plan?
No, yeah, it won't be the final one, it'll just, it'll be options, this is what it could look like. What is the consensus?
Who's going to be meeting within the next two months?
Pardon me?
Who's going to be meeting in the next two months?
State, city, really about it, and then, I mean, the public, when we get something on the sheet of paper.
I asked if you could please notify the council people in that district that it's going to affect those residents in that area, if you could invite those councilmen to the meeting, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
Did they notify you when you, when they did Guthrie and some of your areas?
Definitely not.
No, I'm just asking, yeah, please, thank you.
Any further old business? Let's move on to new business, the floor is open to new business? With none said, do we have any public comments?
No, Mr. President.
The chair will now accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Roll call to adjourn. Garcia sounds good.
Okay. Maldonado?
Yes.
Franciskey?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Garcia? Orange?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes, meeting is adjourned.